Wayne Westland Community Schools on Monday, April 18th at 7:00. Your presence shows your interest in public education and we welcome you. So, first of all, we have two students from Walker Winter Elementary School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. Would Samantha Bush and Alyssa Gotts please come forward? Right there, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you young ladies will stay there, Mrs. Hines is gonna come up. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Ladies, if you'd just stay right there. We have Mrs. Hines coming. Okay, we're going to read your biographies now. First of all, where's Samantha? My name is Samantha Bush and I am in kindergarten at Walker Winter Elementary School. My teacher's name is Mrs. Worth. My favorite thing to do at school is everything, but if I have to pick just a few things, it would be reading books and having music class. My mom is the music teacher. The best thing I get to do in Mrs. Worth's class is to be the helper of the day. I get to be in charge. I also like to do my spelling test because it is important. At Walker Winter, we are learning about lifelong guidelines and life skills and I would like and I like learning about them because they are important. I live with my mom, my dad, and brother. My favorite things to do after school include playing with my basketball and hula hoop, going in and out of our hot tub with my family, and playing Barbie with my mom and dad and coloring. Samantha, is your dad here tonight? No? He likes to play with Barbies? Does? Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure then. All right, Alyssa? Is it Alyssa or Lisa?
Alyssa.
Alyssa, my name is Alyssa Gotts. I am in kindergarten at Walker Winter Elementary School in Mrs. Worth's class. My favorite thing to do at school is to play the game "Let's Find Out" with my class. We learn things we never knew before. The thing I like about Walker Winter is that everyone is nice to you. My favorite lifelong guideline is friendship because I love my friends. I live with my mom and dad, my big sister Abby, and our dog Shadow. I like to play softball, board games, and take walks with my family. Great. Mrs. Hines?
Hello, my name is Melody Hines and I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Wayne Westland Board of Education for presenting the Pledge of Allegiance to Samantha Bush for participating in our flag ceremony. So Samantha, do you have any family members today? Would you like them to stand up so we can see who they are? And is your principal here today? Could she please stand? And Ms. Alyssa Gotts, on behalf of the Wayne Westland Board of Education, we would like to thank you for participating in the Pledge of Allegiance Flag Ceremony. And here's an award to you as well. And do you have any family members in the audience? Please stand. And the principal as well, same principal. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. And Jenny's gonna take your pictures.
Moving on to 242.16, roll call in attendance, please, Dr. Weaver.
Mrs. Madison?
Present.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mrs. Madell?
I'm here.
Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Here.
I am present, Madam President.
Present.
Let the record reflect that we are all here this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 243.16, recognitions and presentations, Dr. Hamala?
Yes, good evening. We are going to be honoring a student who participated and actually did very, very well in our annual spelling bee, and I'm going to invite Mary Jane Milkie up to the microphone to share the event and to introduce our winner.
I'm not sure where to put this. Good evening. We had two students participate in the spelling bee this year. Our winner at the upper elementary was Joseph Nunez. Would you like to come up and stand next to me, Joseph? And our winner, and he's from Marshall Upper Elementary. And our winner in the middle school spelling bee was Bassett Fajabi. Bassett, would you like to come up and stand with me too? And both of these young men represented Wayne Westland Community Schools downtown at the Charles H. Wright Museum in the Wayne County Spelling Bee. It was sponsored by Channel 7 in Detroit. And I'll tell you what, Wayne Westland's getting a reputation down there because last year, we had students that were in the running right until the last, and both of these young men were there for right up almost till the end. So they did a fantastic job. I have to put this down. Each student has a plaque that goes on the wall at their school building. This one is for Bassett, and if you'd like to look at that and see. This is for Joseph. And both of them are recognized for their excellence in spelling and their participation. And these will hang on the wall in their school buildings in the front hallway when they come in, so everyone can see what they've accomplished. And shall I turn it over to you, Carol?
If you'd like.
I want to thank them though, they did such a good job. Gentlemen, we're back together again, huh? Little less stressful than it was the last time, but you both went above and beyond and proved what great students you are and the students of Wayne Westland are also. You did us proud, and we are so pleased to be able to recognize you at this meeting. So for Bassett, we have a certificate suitable for framing, recognizing your skills in being able to spell some really tough words. Do you remember which one bounced you out? Probably won't remember how to spell his name, but he will remember how to spell that word. Joseph, for you also, we have a certificate of appreciation and recognition for upholding our honor at the spelling bee this year. And congratulations from all of us. Do you remember which word knocked you out?
Schwa.
Yeah. A horrible schwa. I know. I don't know, but I remember teaching that, especially whether it was accented or unaccented schwa.
It's a letter in there.
It's the one that looks like an upside-down A when you look at the pronunciation key. Sometimes an E. It depends on the version of the dictionary you're looking in. Yeah, so, trust me, that gets everybody every single year is the schwa. So, congratulations, and if you're of the right age and grade level for next year, hopefully we'll see you back next year. You're not? Are you aged out?
If you go that way, Ms. Johnson's gonna take your picture. Thank you, both. And it's okay if you need to leave. You're more than welcome to stay, but if you have to escape out, go ahead, it's no problem. Thank you for coming. Please come again. Moving on to item number 244.16, citizen comments, agenda items only, Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is a place on our agenda that offers you the opportunity in the audience to speak to any agenda item tonight. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Not seen yet.
Seeing none, Madam President?
Thank you. Moving on to item number 245.16, consent agenda. I will entertain a motion at this time.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver. Supported by Mrs. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
After bringing myself up to speed, yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 246.16, review and approval of business services and finance items, Dr. or Mr. Larson Schidler?
Thank you, President Walker.
It's coming. Very soon.
Yeah. Tonight, we have a couple items. The first is, we'd like to request the use of Miller Camp Hill Law Firm. There were a couple of attorneys that worked at Clark Hill that Dr. Callmire and I use for contracts, bond financing, and line of credit. They have a good history with the district, and they're very efficient and effective in meeting our needs. The price will be the same hourly rate as Clark Hill, where they came from.
Okay. This time, I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Okay, well, do move by Mrs. Madell and supported by Mrs. Hines, or Mrs. Hines, Mrs. Madison. Any discussion?
I just have one quick question. Now, will it cause any conflict with Clark Hill if we're using those attorneys? Will everything be okay legally?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
There's no conflict or anything. I mean, we're just using them for specific items that they were doing services they were supplying while they were at Clark Hill. We'd like to use the same attorneys.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Okay. Thank you again, Madam President. This is for the purchase of audio enhancement items. These are sound systems in the classrooms, primarily K through 6. In prior years, I met with John Mills. Prior years, sound systems were checked annually. This year, John went out to a notification system of some sort, of sorts, I should say, that he would have teachers contact him if they needed new equipment or if they needed updates. With that, John would then have the company go out and meet with a teacher, check out the system. So, the information in your board packet identifies the equipment that is being replaced. Original funding was from title and IDEA funds. This purchase, less the trade-in of $15,010, is through a sole source provider from IDEA funds.
Thank you. Take a motion at this time?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion?
Just one quick question. How long, on average, do those systems last? Like, how many years do we have to use and replace those?
Wow. John?
We have them as old as 12 years. In that, by their beginning, they were installed over a three- to four-year period. The 600 systems we have in that, we're starting to have some.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Madam President, just for the record, because, John, you weren't at the mic, just the answer to John's question, so it gets picked up on the home video if anybody's watching, is that they usually last about 12 years.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item C.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Item C is for a food service dry freight van. This is a purchase of a F-754 truck. It's replacing a 2001 lift truck that is no longer serviceable. This truck will be used to transport and deliver items, not requiring refrigeration. Use of the refrigeration truck is not practical for non-refrigeration items. Purchased based on the April 5th, 2016 bid opening, and funding is through food service funds. Use support the program.
Okay, entertain a motion at this time?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Through the chair to Mr. Larson Schidler. The funding for this truck comes out of the food service special funds?
Yes, food service funds.
It's not coming out of the general fund?
No. And food service funds, if you remember a couple of years ago, MDE requested or required us to actually spend it on the program. And what we're doing is we're spending on equipment that we need throughout the program. We've replaced tables, kitchen items, and this is just part of that replacement process.
I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you.
This is not out of the general fund.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, Mr. Larson Schidler. If members serves, this is the third truck that we've bought in the last several meetings. What is the shape of our fleet at this point, and can we expect more purchases like this?
The shape of our overall fleet is terrible. I wouldn't, you know, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. Last time we bought equipment was basically with the '98 bond issue. All the equipment is falling apart. It's not safe, I believe, for our employees to drive, and it's not reliable to do the job that they need to do. You know, with this, purchasing the dry goods truck, and I think the other trucks were not for food service. One was for our carpenter and...
Salt.
Salt truck, yeah. You know, it's, those were trucks that broke down. This is a truck that is broke down also. You know, I'm looking out for the staff because lift tailgate is not working properly. You know, we have to go resort to lifting the items in manually. I fear workers count injuring an employee, and I'd rather our employees be safe and do their job effectively.
Okay. So, overall, in our district, you may not have an exact number, but non-bus, how many trucks do we have in our fleet? All through the departments?
Yeah, somewhere around 40.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect unanimous vote.
Thank you. The final item D, please.
Okay, thank you again, Madam President. The last item is wireless access points. This is purchase of wireless access points and network electronics through the State Strategic Readiness Support Grant, SRS. The purchase is a result of April 7th, 2016 bid opening in consultation with Convergent Technology Partners, the district's E-rate advisor. Net Tech Corporation was selected for the purchase of wireless access points in the district's K-6 buildings. Purchase includes 10 years of licensing and warranty coverage. Portion of the purchase will be reimbursed through the federal E-rate funding. District staff will install the equipment.
Moved by Mr. Griffin? Supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
I vote yes, Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Let the record reflect unanimous vote.
Thank you, and thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to item number 247.16, Head Start Monthly Report. Mrs. Madell?
As required by federal law, each of you has received a copy of the Head Start Monthly Report for March in your board packet that you received last Tuesday. With me today, I also have assessment scores that if any of you are interested in seeing, this is the information that shows the progress that our students have made from September to November, and then from December to March, or end of February sometime, when they were reassessed. And the scores are segregated out for boys and girls and also by skills, so that we can see the growth that the students are making. So if you are interested, I did bring that with me today. We are coming into the season where not only are we looking for students right now to fill some vacancies in our enrollment, but in the next couple of weeks, we will start our enrollment for next school year. So hopefully, you will get bombarded with a lot of information about Head Start and come to Head Start and be part of Head Start and see if you qualify for Head Start. So, it's a great program, and we offer the best in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Moving on to item number 248.16, Superintendent Report. Dr. Hamala?
Thank you, President Walker. I'd like to share briefly a couple of items with you, and to start off, I'd like to add a little bit to the dialogue that just occurred in regards to how we use our funds, because I know for the community and for our staff, school finance is a complex picture. And one of the things that we've had to do, given our low fund balance, as well as the low funding we receive from the state, is to look at alternative funds that we can use to purchase things and to update our school districts. So, for example, in the Instructional Department, we've been the beneficiary of a couple of grants. Our leader in me efforts are generally grant-funded, going after grants that then don't have an effect on the general fund. The Development of Our Technology for Learning Plan was also funded through outside sources. That was when our Assistant Superintendent, John Alberg, participated in the Lila Fellowship and was selected as the first cohort of staff to do that work. The SRS grant that Jim referred to tonight for the access points and the wireless access points, we were able to purchase a lot of equipment for our classrooms and our students, again through funds that don't hit the general fund. That's just a few of the items we've been trying to identify to fund things we need without affecting our general fund. And I think it's very important for our staff and our community to be aware, so I appreciate the board's support for that and helping our public to be aware of sort of a complex finance system within schools. I'd also like to share an update on our strategic planning. We have offered all of our staff an opportunity to provide their thinking and perspectives relative to drafting goals. That will be provided to our board in our meeting in June. We're still on track for that. We are receiving feedback from the staff, and they have through April 29th to provide their thinking. And I would encourage staff who have not had a chance to submit their feedback to go ahead and provide that to us through the means that we have provided. So, we're still on track to share with you at your June 6th meeting, a draft plan, and we're looking forward to doing that. In terms of finance, again, and budget planning for the 2016-17 school year, the governor, the House, and the Senate have all proposed school aid budgets for next year. We're monitoring the three proposals and their impact on Wayne Westland Community Schools. In general, the proposals offer a minimal increase in funding. However, given declining enrollment, the net effect will likely be positive for us, but very small positive number. The Revenue Estimating Conference is in May, and the state's process will take on more speed at that time. We'll keep you posted as to what we hear. The outcome at this point is certainly uncertain. Now, that's the best I can say about that. I have not updated you on the third grade reading bill since the fall. It is making its way through the legislative process, although slowly and rightfully so. Currently, there has been a Senate substitution for the bill that allows for parental exemption to the mandatory retention, which I think is a good idea. We were, I was sharing with you in the fall, that was a concern to me, that parents would not have the opportunity to voice their thoughts about retention if it were simply mandated in the law. But the Senate substitution does allow for a parental exemption, so that definitely is a positive move in a positive direction, because we know that the research clearly demonstrates that retention is not the solution, but intervention and additional teaching is. So I'm pleased with that change. I want our parents to be aware of that, and certainly because it's still in process, there's opportunity for folks to share their thinking with legislators, and that bill has been referred back to conference committees. So I'll keep you posted on that important piece of legislation. And finally, with the change in weather and our excitement about spring and all the upcoming activities that close out a school year, I would like to remind all of our students to think safety first. Your safe travel, whether on foot or in cars, is important and should be your first priority. But also, please ensure that you participate honorably and appropriately at all the events that we offer as we close the school year. So, you are important to us. Please be careful and thoughtful as we progress through the end of the school year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala.
Madam President, could I, through the chair?
Sure.
Point of information on the state aid bill. Do you have any update on where they're at in technical education funding? Because I know we participated in that, and hopefully, our complex with service of many districts would have an update. So, I'd just like to know where you see that and what your update is.
Sure, there are, actually, there are some updates in each of the versions, and they're all a little bit different. And I probably won't be able to identify which of which version, but there is additional funding that would allow for some capital expenditures. Capital expenditures are things like we have to replace a hoist in an auto tech lab, or you want to add an additional ventilation unit in a welding station. So those would be capital expenditures. The fund would allow for some of those upgrades. The additional funding that is in the current formula for added cost remains basically the same. The formula had changed a year ago with the state. That has not been to my liking. It is a disadvantage to us. We have voiced that with the State Department, and they are looking again at making another change, which, again, in my mind, would not serve our career technical campus, and that is the removal of the length of time of the program. So in other words, our career tech programs run two and a half hours. The state formula incentivizes one-hour classroom programs. If you're building a house or learning how to weld or to fix a car, you can't transport students to a campus, have them attend, and get back to their school within an hour. I think it does a disservice. We have continued to voice that with the State Department. That's with the Michigan Department of Ed Office of Career Technical Education, and will continue to do it. The other area is a potential increase in funding, which falls under career and technical education in what's called the early-middle college options. And you have to start a new program in order to benefit from those funds. We would have to look at that within our strategic planning process. There are some pros and cons to doing that. One of the things we would have to think about is, would we actually just be transitioning students out of one program and into another? Would they stop going to career tech and then go to early-middle college, instead of it being an option that more students would enroll in? So we're not quite to any decision point, although we've been learning from the state what early-middle college might look like. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you for your update.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 249.16, citizen comments. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is a place on our agenda where the audience may speak to any issue they deem necessary. Is there anyone? Seeing none, Madam President?
Thank you. Moving on to item number 250.16, review and recommendations, Board of Education. Mrs. Madison, can you start us off, please?
I have no comment this evening, other than for everyone to watch their calendars. And like Dr. Hamala said, we do have a lot of functions coming up, and I don't want to start favoring or pointing any out in particular. I do know all of our schools have many great activities and functions going on coming up soon, so check your calendars, check with your schools, and look forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you. Mrs. Hines?
I'd like to thank and congratulate the junior ROTC for doing such a fabulous job. We have some awesome groups in the Wayne Westland School District. I also wanted to announce, on the city of Westland, they're having a homecoming, and we're working with the Department of Parks and Recreation Department. And for the high school students, they're having an art competition, and the entry date, the last date to turn the information in is May 50th.
And for the high school students, they're having an art competition, and the entry date, the last date to turn the information in is May fifteenth. And what it is, they're doing a time capsule, so they want to include the school district. We want to work more with the city and Parks and Rec. So what they're doing, they're having an art contest where they're reaching out to the children in the high schools, and what they have to do is figure out like some type of artwork in which it talks about going back in time, like a time capsule to put in a time capsule. And the student that wins the competition, they're going to post the artwork at City Hall in the art gallery, and then they'll be on the spotlight on the cable station, and then they'll receive a hundred-dollar gift certificate. So, I just got the information today from John Adams. Anybody interested, please contact John Adams with the Wayne Westland Parks and Recreation Department at City Hall. And one more thing, too. I'd like to congratulate you guys for doing such a fabulous job on the budget. When I looked at the paperwork, I was really excited about what you guys are doing, how everything is moving in a positive direction, and we're working so hard to try to keep our fund balance up. The one thing I'm really concerned about, and I know it's a huge issue, and maybe it's something we should bring up in the Strategic Planning Committee, is transportation. With, like you said, with the busing, because I get a lot of calls from my son's school saying the buses are breaking down, and I'm just concerned about the children's safety, because with a bus breakdown, they get in an accident, I'm really concerned about that. So, and I know we don't really have the money, but maybe in our strategic plan, maybe that's something we should add to talk about strategic ways to try to get additional funds for our transportation department.
Thank you, Mrs. Hines. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you. Well, there are a couple of events coming up that I would like to highlight. One of them is tomorrow evening. The planetarium at John Glenn High School is having a new grand opening. When the building opened, we had a planetarium, but the equipment has failed over the years. It's been nearly a half-century. And in this place, we have a new projector, and I'm looking forward to seeing that, that equipment tomorrow evening. Also, next week, the twenty-seventh, on a Wednesday, the USO Dance at John Glenn is going to be held. It's for, I believe, Desert Storm Forward, if I've got that correct, and I'm looking forward to that as well. It's always a great evening, the USO Dance is. I want to thank Dr. Weaver for his question on transportation, on non-transportation vehicles, service vehicles, and for your response to those questions, Mr. Larson Scheidler. We've spent about five hundred thousand dollars tonight, and yet, not one penny of it has come from our budgeted resources. Two of the items were covered by grants, a third by the Food Service Fund. You're doing a fantastic job of finding money where there is no money. And I have great faith that you will continue to do that, but at the same time, I take to heart what you had to say about the condition of our service fleet. And, and perhaps, Mrs. Hines, we should include your comments on, on bus transportation as well. We have some work to do.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, I want to highlight, I'm not going to reiterate what Mrs. Hines said, but I do want to highlight the city's fiftieth anniversary, since I'm going to be a participant in that, as a former mayor. And I think, I just am really happy with the way that the school district of Wayne Westland and the City of Westland, with Mayor Wild and our superintendent, is working together, because in this day and age, with the money situation we have from the state, which is in our, in our case, is practically nothing. That's why we don't have a fund balance of five percent, and I never felt that that was necessary in a district that watches their money, but that's the law, so we have to combine, we have to comply with it. But I, I think that the reason that we can survive is because we work together as a community, and it's going to take all of that and more, and, and till we get some resolution with our money situation in order to survive this. There's not a board member up here that I know that wouldn't love to give out great raises, but if you don't have it, and the issue is solvency, and staying out of the hands of some stupid, I might add, emergency manager, and then the decision is really easy. So, that's my comment, and I'm looking forward to seeing, hopefully, everyone there, and that's all, Bush. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Let me just say that my question earlier should be construed in no way, shape, or form as an attack. I, I would just like some better information as to where we're going from here. Also, I'd like to thank Samantha Bush and Alyssa Gotts for sharing the Pledge of Allegiance with us tonight. And I, too, am looking forward to the planetarium opening tomorrow night. I hope that we have a bunch of interested high schoolers that are going to take advantage of that program. Thank you. That concludes my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell.
Thank you. Last month, I mentioned that our JROTC students had competed in a nationwide competition and had done very well. Well, they, too, are having their own competition again this year. Each year, they, usually in the late spring, they offer a competition to all of the local ROTC, JROTC groups, and it's a raider competition, which means it's not quite track and field, but pretty darn close, where it's more like an obstacle course for the cadets. So that will be coming up. And then, along with the spring, comes their award ceremonies that they have, where the students have earned different awards and scholarship money. Last week, I got a chance to go to John Glenn's play, Into the Woods. The students did an excellent job. We've got some pretty good actors up there on that stage, and some pretty good singers, and it was great. I got, instead of going in the evening, I went in the morning, where the middle school students were there, and they got a chance to do a question-answer type of thing, and it was really interesting to see and hear what the students were thinking about, and hopefully, potentially, they will become part of that theater program. Wayne Hines is coming up. They are doing Little Mermaid at the end of the month. I think it's the twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-first of this month at Stock Meyer. I know that tickets are available for those performances, so please come and support our students. And as Mrs. Madison said, there's a lot of events coming up, and this week alone, we've got parent-teacher conferences in the elementary buildings and upper elementary, I think, too. And, you know, after that, it's just one thing after another, and it's going to be pretty, pretty busy between now and the end of the school year, till we get to graduation and under, underclassman honors. So, put your track shoes on, so we can get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Once again, I want to thank the students from Walter Winter who let us in the pledge, Samantha Bush and Alyssa Gotts. And I also want to say, congratulations again to the spelling bee participants, Joseph Nunez and Bassett Fajee. And as always, I appreciate you coming out and taking time out of your day to spend with us and come to a meeting, and we look forward to seeing you next month. And at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Mrs. Hines. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. See you all next month.